All right, we're getting the meeting, August 22nd meeting of the Lemonsir School Committee. Would everybody please stay after the pledge and say?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, I would like to open up public comments. We'll start with in person. Would anybody in the room here like to make a public comment? Okay. We will open it up to anybody online. Would anybody online like to make a public comments? All right. We are going to one more call. Would anybody either online or in person like to make a public comment? And one last time, would anybody online or in person like to provide public comments? All right. And at this time, we will close public comments. And thank you, Ron, for reminding me that I need to read the school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Lemonsir Public Schools students in places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemonsir. Okay. Communications?
There are no communications this evening.
And superintendent report?
Thank you. So, welcome back, everybody.
Yes.
It's happening, and it's happening really quickly. I thought it was a long great summer. I hope you enjoyed it as well. And thank you, everybody that's here this evening. Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge we are two student reps that will be joining us this year and working with Brandon. So, we have Gold Lee and Maddie Cohen. So, this is exciting. This has been a long time coming, guys. So, welcome to the team. And Brandon, we'll be reaching out to you. And we'll organize and get back together. This was a tough chance that we're here. So, we will be back at Apple Seeds once the renovations is completed. Welcome to the team. And welcome back to school. Be better. So, actually, we're very excited this year. We'll never ever use the word normal again. It looks like we're moving into a very typical school year. And we're excited for that. It feels very natural, the things that are happening. We are following the CDC guidance, which allows for no restrictions at this time. We have several thousand home kids that we are going to pass out to our families because we think it's important. You know, at home, if you want to just self-monitor, should your child be COVID positive this year? Please just contact our school, our secretaries, our nurses. But make sure that you report it to the board of health. Because they will be documenting this. The school department will not be documenting. But we want everybody to be healthy and back in school on a typical trajectory. And if they do test positive, to stay home. Stay home. And we will reach out to follow the guidance. So, thank you. Currently, our buildings, our facilities look really amazing. We have quite a bit of summer school programming, from enrichment to mediation, you name it. All the schools were utilized and full. But our custodians, and we're almost to 100% with our staff in here, the buildings look really remarkable. We've done a very nice job. And they will be transitioning to the outside and the grounds, just to make sure that we are staying up and that our buildings do look inviting for our students. All curriculum materials, all the new program, programming is in. Resources are in. We had over 200 teachers this year participate in summer PV. That was tremendous. And it was quality. We sent some out of district. We sent them to the towns. They were all over the state of Massachusetts. And, but we hosted quite a bit of the PV for staff. So, we're excited to get that started. There will be free breakfast and lunch for all students again this year. That feels really good. Food should not ever be an option for our children to come to school. So, we will continue to monitor that. But for this school year, breakfast and lunch will be free. Very exciting. Bus routes are out. That was a celebration. Those rooms were done. Thank you to our business manager, Melanie Michaels, early. They are posted. She is the contact. And I'm sure you might receive a few emails saying, you know, can I have this stuff? Can I have that stuff? Melanie Michaels is our point. So, just contact her and see what her student. I do want to thank them because it's been a mission to get their boots out earlier and earlier every year. So, we're very grateful for that. Right now, we are still enrolling. Our parent information center, the line is out the door all day, every day. Students are showing up. They're enrolling. We're watching our class sizes, expanding if we have to. And right now, we are looking, we meet our kindergarten parents. They're starting to show up. They started a little bit later than us. So, they tend to trickle in a little bit later. But we feel confident we will have all of our classrooms and staffing. We are, I think where our district is in a better place than most. So, I know you've heard about the national crisis out there, about staffing. We're still looking for people. We're hiring on an ongoing basis. We are advertising wherever and whenever we can. But we are in good shape to open next Tuesday in our general classrooms. There are still positions that we will continue to fill. And we will notify you as those become available. A big piece for us right now is having families update their contact information. And this is for several reasons. There's emergency contact information. There's urgent documentation. It's about placement, transportation, all of it. So, if a parent needs to update any contact information, please reach out to your school right now. Our secretaries are back full-time. Administration is in the building. And the PIC Center has additional help. So, if that needs to be updated, let us know. Several people have asked about the camera project at the high school. They are being installed as we speak. We're hoping that project will be wrapped up before day next Tuesday. And I will provide you with an update after that is completed. This evening is freshman orientation. And that's why we're hosting here tonight. Moving forward, we will post these meetings over at Apple Seeds. That's on the. But we have freshmen all over the place. We have a quite large class. And between those and our kindergarten socials, our middle school staff updates, this week will be very, very busy. So, should you want to attend, please feel free. So, opening date for teachers is next Monday. Breakfast is at 8:00. And then I welcome back staff at 8:30. I'm really excited to say that Commissioner Riley is going to come out and read our staff and welcome them back. It's really an honor to have our CEO address our staff. Our staff is upset. They've worked really hard. So, I feel honored, honored to have them. So, I'd love to have all of you there if possible. And students on Tuesday, August 30th. So, mamas and dads, let's get back to those sleep routines, bed routines. Attendance is a priority this year. So, we need everybody coming in. And then we follow up with kindergarten on September 6th. So, used to a great year, used to a typical year this time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Move on to presentations and discussions. And we have superintendent Gold.
Thank you. So, I sent these out last week. I did draft on here. The superintendent goals are the overarching goals that, really, they're like umbrellas that filter down to school improvement plans, principals, all the way down to the individual teacher, to the individual student. At this time, you know, some of our data is still embargoed, which always drives us a little bit crazy, but that's okay. Our overall, we have four overarching goals. One is need to improve our daily attendance. Chronic absenteeism is calculated at 10%. If students are out, so 18 days out of 180, that's a lot. That impacts learning. 90% of his job is about showing up. So, 35% of our students last year, that's on average, hit that threshold. So, we need to work really hard to get our students to come to the building. I think that this is a community goal, family goal, that all of us can wrap our eyes around and hands around and make sure that our students want to be in our buildings and be a part of us. The other is about closing our gaps, all of our gaps. But, and that comes in full range. We are identifying our DIL students right now. They are the largest gap. And COVID was not kind. With our professional development moving forward, we have identified and have a measure that's in a timely fashion for us to see how we move students. We assess them in January, February. We receive those results before we ever get, say, M-Pass, even though that gets fed in usually. So, they are our largest and fastest growing population of schools. So, we need to address their needs and in the new curriculum, they have been addressed. The third is around professional growth for all. We've had some outstanding facilitators this year. And that comes from the top down and in between. Everyone will be engaging all year long, as we did this summer. And lo and behold, our district goal at the end is about school safety. I think Evolvy has really reared its ugly head for, since it's not going away. So, Ed Davis, he is the former commissioner in Boston, who was part of the Boston Fund. He now works for the Department of Ed. And he speaks with superintendents every month. And there is quite a bit of work coming down the pathway around our trainings and perhaps in grants. So, our safety team will be addressing school safety across the district throughout the year. Yes, sir?
When we ended the last school year, we talked about the importance of, as much as we all think that everyone's reading the school manual, the rules and regulations. Does anybody here that's done so have a few questions? I roll down, see if the best of you, see if that's your right hand. And those are probably the only sections I read. But we have to, we have to make sure that we communicate the most important parts, that these are buildings to learn. And they have to be safe. And we can't tolerate it. We'll do anything. And I think your administration, the teachers, are going above and beyond. They'll do anything to help any student for any reason for as long as it takes. But there got to be rules. And we, as a school committee, have to back the superintendent, to back the principals, to know that we just can't tolerate. Whatever those top 10 are, whether it is a top five page, a top five, top 15, whatever, we've got to be absolutely certain we can really do that. Otherwise, it just, I didn't read it, then we get it, and miss that five. We're there like.
So, that's part of the goal, is to make sure that we can temporize these goals so that everybody does understand the importance of this. And we started, Stephen Monge is heading a safety team, which includes OEM, who's been very much a part of this team, and our police chief. And we started walking buildings today. This is a non-negotiable amongst public schools, that we will provide safe environments at any and all cost. But that is a community project as well. So, we're hoping to have everybody's support. If you notice, this document, I set it up a little bit different from the way I've done goals in the past. There was a lot of conversation by this committee about setting goals for yourself and how they can align and support us. So, at some point, maybe that's some work that we could do in a workshop, just to know that we have your support moving forward.
But we're going to, we've got all the teachers coming on, all the principals. We've got students coming in for the first time, other students coming in. I think we've got to communicate that right now, like absolutely, there it is up on the board. Everyone gets a piece of it. There's the list right here. These are the things we absolutely own. And we have to back up our principals and the teachers. They're here to teach. They didn't go to referee school. It's okay to go to mediation school when all right. But they didn't go to, you know, self-defense. They didn't go to criminal justice. They went to teach. We're going to back them up and say, look, we know why you're here. It's why people aren't, it's why people aren't getting into the business anymore, partly. It's because they want to teach and they're not allowed to because half the days tied up with other issues. So, I didn't really have to just communicate that immediately without billboards, whatever things to do. Because if not, we're just going to be married to this for another school year. We don't, right? We want to follow through with the rest of your goals about, you know, every kid academically does well. But third of our day is tied up with these other things.
So, we're very celebratory. We feel, we feel great. Our schools look great. And we have to offer students in this community and letting students that want to be in our community. And with your support, I think we are going to have probably a great year for FY '22. I'm so looking forward to a typical, typical year. And we're going to do things even better than we've done in the past.
Any questions about any of these?
And obviously, they need students to show up and understanding how important it is to show up. I know there are a lot of talks about starting the school day later. Most other countries do. But then you talk to students about stating after 2:50 noon. They don't want that either. So, you can't start at 8:50 to 9:15 and then school, you know, we don't. That's get.
The chronic absenteeism that I know of was remarkably high. And that's geared towards any, was it more high school students as opposed to elementary or middle school? And it's broken down on actual data sheet. We look at it by subgroup. Some groups are up to 40% of the chronic absenteeism.
Is that 30 days a year? Is that, is that what I saw?
So, chronic absenteeism, no, that's 35% of our students. So, chronic absenteeism starts at a threshold of 10%. So, it's 18 days to start. So, at least a third of our school district, on average, was out 10% of the school year. Which is an accountability that hasn't pretty good weight to it. And that's increased from previous years. Yes. So, our elementaries in the past have been, I mean, 5%, 6%. Our high schools and those schools, maybe, and it means 35% of our students being out that much, still in the COVID year though, right? So, the quarantining really affected that. So, it's important. We need to have our students in. We only have them 108 days. So, missing 18, that's a hot, that's almost out of the quarter, right? That's a lot. That's a lot.
So, I have a question. Was that, was, did it go down after the CDC updated their guidelines from December to January? When it went from 10-day quarantine to five-day quarantine?
So, this data actually is only counted up till March. That didn't even go to full school year. So, we will get a complete report after that. So, that 35% could go up. I would imagine it's on, because we were having COVID pretty high even after that.
Ron?
The feedback on his question, the chronic absenteeism, is it age-specific?
No, that just.
Well, I know, I know she said something, but I just wanted to know, age-specific, gender-specific.
So, can I tell you? When we get the reports, we get it by school. So, each one of the principals is going to set a goal, how they're going to beat last year's number. Each school has a very different level. Like I said, in the past, our elementary schools have done a very nice job. If you're an elementary parent, you know that they call you, you know, they get nervous when they don't see their child very quickly. And then our middle and high schools tended to be in the low teens, but never to this grade.
And is it gender-specific, you know, like more?
Not gender, not gender, but grade-specific. We can break it down by school. So, we have teams being put together. We're going back to our baccus. We need our kids in. We need our kids. 35% of students.
Sometimes it's a cultural, it's a.
Well, that's where I was, a lot of conversation. That's where I was leaning up to families.
Also had COVID and told people, be cautious. If you have a sniffle, if you have a cough, don't come. My support. Now, you have to go make the test. And if you have a sniffle or a cold, you need to test. You need to go. So, our students have done pretty well despite those absenteeism. So, imagine if we have them for the majority of the time. So, that's really the deal with margin. There was a lot of incentives, you know, sell to your point. At the end of the year, you heard us talking about, please send your child. We're going to have this incentive, you know, raffle, a dinner, this or what. So, we have to do a lot to get our families to make sure we're safe.
Brandon, you have a question. So, can we get like a bi-monthly or monthly, how we doing?
Yes. If you notice, we actually have a report on the calendar and the bucket. We wrote the data out, how order the reporting each month. Absenteeism is a good one. So, we do follow up with principals monthly. They can do it every week and start making their phone calls and following up with families, pulling them in. But we will come to you with the absenteeism report. So, that's an, that's an easy one for us to do. And then form one too.
I started going to exercise with the problem that it might be something to consider with the principals. And they just ask on Fridays or night or Sunday or Monday, do something that's driving your time? I'm shocked. But that's what I'm saying about absenteeism or disciplinary problem. It's, it's what's driving people's time. And I'm curious of what's driving their time as principals. How much of it, that way, we can help them. I mean, that's what we need to know so we can help them. We're, we're the, we're this part of it. And then, but we want to help. But maybe an idea of what's driving their day.
So, we tried to get them to schedule their days last week in training.
Yes.
It was like, do you really want to put this in a blood? It's tough. You know, it's anything can pull you away, but it's about prioritizing it.
But helps us on this day, so what their days like and what's driving their time.
Actually, I think that's great.
And then later, if we're succeeding in bringing students back, and we know that, and we can firm up the whole, you know, give them the rules, we're sticking to them, and we're not backing away from them. So, that works. And Ed Davis and other people working and stuff, the year goes by so fast. And we never know whether or not we've been successful because by now, we get to May and June, it is over, and then we start all over. So, any other questions?
Yeah. Is there a, is there a, with the chronic absenteeism, what's, when is the line crossed?
At the 10%.
At 10%?
10%.
Okay. I know you said 10%. What, you mean 10%?
Out of this school year.
Kid or 10% of the school year? I want to know for each kid, what's the drop that date?
10%.
For each kid?
Yeah, out of, yes. So, if you have 10% of your school year, you're considered, you personally are considered on absentee.
Ken, I know, I know I'm trying, I'm not trying to belabor the, like, please, I'm not trying to belabor anyone. When you say 10%, you need, you need 10%. For example, when his classes, 10% of his classes, or 10% of her class.
I realize we'll be very simplistic. Please forgive me.
Every day, they take attendance. And when you miss 10% of that, then you're.
But a 10% of attendance is done at home room.
A virtual, if you're late, those accounts just be that.
So, there's a time on the day where you're now, you're absent, because you missed the first three hours. You're absent. And it doesn't matter if it's a student or anything. If you're absent, you're absent. You're not present for instruction.
I think the superintendent said they'll analyze the data and see, and they don't have to wait for somebody to be 10% off. You can wait. Pretty much, the principals and the teachers already know who's wrong. Now, let's dive into why. Let's get, you know, is the kid safe? Is it a cultural thing? You know, is there a problem at home? Today, at least as long as it's ever been about, so at least we know, and if the school can help, then we want to help, right? And if it's just a kid, you know, likes watching Boe Angel from 7:00 until noon, that's a different situation, right?
That happens.
Boe Angel. He's not so great. I haven't watched TV in years.
All right. So, put off Boe Angel. It's YouTube for us. Everybody gets on YouTube all day.
That's part of the problem. China allow three hours, whole computer, TikTok. And they invented all this.
It's all night long.
Yes. Well, what would you rather do? Make your bed and your chores or watch TikTok?
TikTok.
Need to tell you helpful hints. Hi, you can come in if you want. Right here?
School committee?
Come on in.
Or are you here for the high school orientation? Or are you, you're at the high school?
Oh, this. Sorry.
Most of all, I'll go check on Melissa. Okay.
I know we have some meetings here.
Yeah, yeah. Jones is okay.
Don't be sorry.
We're glad you're attending.
See? She gets something left, Stephen.
Go to the point.
Have a look.
All right. What's next there, superintendent?
So, would you, would you want to introduce now, or do you want to be on the. Linda, why don't you, just because we're waiting for the other principal to show up, you're waiting? Lyndon, laundry. We're going to jump to the playground in Northwest.
You can come down. Come down. Sit right here.
I need you to sit right here.
If you want, you can do the podium or you can sit here. Whatever.
I'm allowed to sit here.
So, she's. Stand beside you.
So, Lincoln, if you don't mind, I'm going to give you two for this presentation right now. So, to the school committee, I'd like to introduce our brand new Northwest principal. This is Dan Malvey. We are thrilled to have Dan. Dan has been the assistant principal for two years. He went through, I don't know how many interviews. The green just loves to do that and so many different layers. Dan, you want to talk just a little bit about yourself to the committee, about your background and.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, you.
I'm a brand, Dan Malvey. I've worked at Lemonsir Public Schools. This will be my third year. Came in during COVID as an assistant principal there. Previously, I worked in Boston Public Schools for nine years in a variety of roles, school support specialist. My last couple of years in Boston as a principal. And I've also had some time working in the Ferney Public Schools and the Fall River Public Schools. Also, a little personal, I have, I'm married with three children. I have a 14-month-old, a four-and-a-half-half-month-old, and a one child who just turned seven a few days ago. So.
That's it at home.
So much for sleep.
That's right. But it's fun. It's fun though. No, yeah, no TikToks yet, yes.
So, Dan's here. So, you know, anytime to stop over Northwest, that few of you reached out and said, you know, are you okay if we go over and meet Dan personally and sort of talk about him and his goals and his vision? We're really excited to have Dan. Dan has also hired his assistant principal, who's coming out of Lawrence Public Schools. She's in a school that has been under the seniorship for years. And she comes back, comes to us with a tremendous curriculum instruction and assessment background. So, she's a gift. Her name is Abby Lane. So, we will be talking to her as well. So, welcome. But he's also here to support Lyndon. So, many of you, I believe, received an email from Lyndon back in the spring, would you say?
Yeah.
Yes. She wanted to talk to you and us and myself about the playground at Northwest. It's, it's seen better days. So, ready to let you know, when I was the president of the PTO at Northwest School, we put that playground in. And so, my parents are now 33 and 35. So, it was a few years ago that that.
Does that, does that mean the water tees up?
I think so. We raised the money as a PTO. I didn't realize that. So, I actually went to Northwest also. I'm 36. So, you're probably. Like right along there. Yeah. So, I'm like, I mean, I think he was there when I went to school there. You know, it was up till eighth grade. I was that last class there. And we have the playground. So, it's definitely.
It's definitely time. Yeah. Thanks, Dan. So, Lyndon reached out to us. And she wanted to bring this proposal. We've been talking back and forth all summer. She has reached out to the city side. We have worked with Wendy Weeks to see, does this qualify for a grant opportunity? It doesn't. Wendy's done her due diligence on it. We talked to the rec department. We looked at all the city resources. We've looked at a plan. And she's here just, this is the start of a conversation, to see if the school department could, if we would approve any allocations towards this project. Si, I, it's been a long time coming. I remember when Steve and Renee were administrators at that building, the PTO had started to try to raise money. It's very difficult. I get that. But this is our largest elementary school. And I went over there for a few days in the spring. And I stood there at the various times. That playground is used from 7:30 in the morning, and it's covered all day long with phys ed classes, at nighttime at the end of the day. And then the community uses that playground. All day long with phys ed classes, at nighttime at the end of the day, and then the community uses that playground as well. And so it has served its purpose, but at an elementary level, playtime is such an important time. It's when they socialize, it's really during the school day, it's a little time that somebody's not controlling themselves and they can advocate, you know, and they make friends and there's a lot that happens on a playground, it's important. And so when I spoke to Linda about this, I said, let me see what we can do and if this is a year that we can really support moving forward. So Linda has this proposal.
Just, just so you understand, the reason they don't qualify for grants is because they won't give you a grant if it's on school property. Because they want, if somebody, mom and dad has a couple of little ones, they want to be able to play in the playground. They've been excluded from it, a lot of times schools will say, I'm sorry, can't use it. So what we did at Johnson Street Skate Park is back on city land. And the new park up by Francis Drake, next to the water, next to the pool. We deeded it back to the city and that's how we. That's the only reason.
No, yeah, and honestly, this is just really, is this important to us to do?
Yeah.
And we've talked to the business manager a few times, thinking of things that we can do creatively. So I said to Linda, bring us the Cadillac, but we go with the Honda.
Okay, I drive a Honda.
That's great. That's great. So Linda, go ahead.
Okay. So this is the project, like Paula said, it's been a goal for a long time now. We finally over the last year kind of decided to do the work, to kind of dig into it and see how we can make this possible and hopefully we can have support to move forward, to explore and see what we can do. So this project I've been working on for the better part of this year. And I've been working with different contractors through O'Brien and Fonz as the company. There are those on the bottom of that second page here and we have a rep there. And I originally reached out to the mayor and then he sent me over to the rec department and they recommended this company. Bitchburg, the city of Bitchburg only uses this company. Landscape Structures is what was recommended. And then Judy Sumner at the rec department, she really recommended them. And she said the quality's there and it has held up better than any other one. So, and they had a relationship with the rep for this area. So it was kind of an easy transition for me to start working with him. Colin is his name, he's been great. Come on speed dial, he's been really good to us. So to start here, it's just the breakdown of the quote. So the equipment here, you'll see the 133, 670, that's just the product and the delivery. And then basketball is like a huge thing right now. We have two hoops and they're working, we painted the court there, but they're alongside the road, the car line road, and the balls are constantly going over the fence. And if you see it in action, you will see that it's just, I mean, it's a forever issue. And where it gets used so much, that's a, you know, a big problem. So we'd like to move that down and then also make three hoops because I met with the duties and got a lot of feedback from them. And one thing with basketball being such a big thing there on our blacktop, the smaller kids can never use it. And we're okay here at school, we have over 700 students at Northwest. So those smaller ones, they matter, you know? So we'd like to have three hoops there. And so that's product and delivery. And then installation, that's, they discuss with contractors, they get prices for that. So this would be for everything, soup to nuts, basically. And at the end of this, the note section here, you'll see the drainage plan. So I met with a landscape architect who came out and he surveyed the site because we had drainage issues there in the playground for years and years. The water has nowhere to go, it just sits on that grass. And then it doesn't get used a lot because even the playground, which you know has run down a lot of broken things. Even that, we have to put cones up and block things off because the water just sits there and floods. And then they have to wait days for it to dry out. So they can't even use the space that we do have a lot of the time. So we end up doing blacktop only, which also kind of makes it why the hoops are so popular probably. But so we have to figure out a drainage issue, especially if we're looking at putting such a good amount of money into this project. We want it to be usable, we want it to last and, you know, sustain. So the landscape architect came, he surveyed the site, did an assessment, and then he designed a plan to come up with it. So that's included here and the contractors are doing the demo, the work, all of that. For the playground, he also can do, their company can do that work for the drain as well. So that's all inclusive with the company. And that's the 91. And then the next line is the engineered wood fiber. That's like the, like the playground chips, like the mulch kind of thing that they use, the safety stuff there. So then turnkeys, soup to nuts, they were looking at the 243 by the week. And that's everything. And then the lead time, they say 21-plus weeks. We would be, if we move forward with this in like a timely manner, it would be spring 2023, that's our goal. And it would take them about two weeks to do the project. And PTO is, we did our budget and so far we can contribute $16,000. So, so that's what we have to go forward to them. So then if you turn the page, you'll see these are the images that we have of the new playground. So the current playground is the same layout as this. So we're basically demoing most of it. There's one section of swings that's in good shape that we would leave, but pretty much everything else would go on this section. And then we have the main structure there. And then these two round spots here that you see in the front, this is, those are like three-person spinners. One thing, when we toured the playground, the kids keep running up, what are you doing? And we're looking to build a new playground, what do you think? And I swear, so many kids have said, I mean, I'm sure Dan's been testing this, they like the spinners, they want their spinners, you know? Because there's one there currently, one that was broken that got ripped out. So they only have one now and they're like, we need a better. So that's a big deal to them.
When you're young, you want your world to spin. You want to get off. Let me off.
Absolutely. Those are, those can be a big picture. And then right in the middle there, you'll see that's a seesaw, it's called, and it's a four-person seated, like a seesaw thing, but it's very inclusive. It's for all abilities and that was something when I was working with Paula, she really wanted to make sure that we not only cater to those younger kids, like I mentioned, but that we had inclusive pieces as well. So that's something that can be used for all different abilities. And then on this new set of swings here, there's the first one there, which is a inclusive swing. And with people with different disabilities, sensory costs, things like that, that would be really helpful. And then we've got those regular swings there and then on to the two-seater one, which can be inclusive with other abilities or for, you know, anyone can use them. And then to the right of this swing, which is not on the paper, that's where the regular swings currently are and will be staying. Like I said, we have over 700 students and, I mean, they wait in line and our duty aides stand there and have to time them, you know, oh, yep, your 30 seconds is up, you're next, you know? So the more swings the better, so. And then below is just that enhanced view there. And then on the opposite side, we have our field and then the blacktop, which is where the hoops would be. So then the next one is the full layout here, minus where the very bottom would be the extension where our current swings are. But this is just like the 2B layout of currently, you can see, and then where the red outlines are, that's like where the new equipment will go. And where it's blocked off in different sections here. It's currently like that at our layout. If you have them in the Northwest, we have like the raised areas around our structures. This would all be one single kind of structure now. And it would just go the length of it. And that's our car line to the right there with the baseball field. And then on the last page here, this is just the sketch done by the landscape architect. And on the very right, where you see that purple dash line, that is the main drain line that they're proposing that would be a fence. It would be like a French drain. I mean, I'm not an expert, but from my understanding, it would be a drain line here and it would go the length of the whole field here. And then meet at this access point. And then we have a manhole currently in that car line right there that it would drain into. So luckily we have that drain line, they had to, you know, look into that to see if there would be that we could tie into it with the city's permission and everything. And otherwise they would have had to put like a well in for us to drain into, so this was a huge cost saver. And then this red line to the left is if we felt like down the road, they think that this would alleviate that problem. If we felt like down the road it wasn't and we needed more help with that, they could tie in another drain line, but they believe that we would only need to do the first part. So that's everything that I have for you tonight. I would love for everyone to visit the site if you'd like to. I mean, we're about to start and you can see it in action and what. But yeah, we want to start the conversation and hopefully have your support with that.
Thank you so much for all the work that you've done, it is very labor intensive.
Yeah.
And I give them full support of having a usable playground in Northwest School. They should be imperative of all of their other power practices.
Thank you so much.
Also, if I may, part of this project, when you go there, you'll see that the way the playground is set up right now, the sightlines is very concerning. You can't see children on the other side of a lot of these structures, so there's a seat concern. Where when Linda and I were talking about this, how do we open this so that no matter where you're standing on that, and it's a big space, that children are always in front of you and there isn't that sightline issue. So this compromises all of that as well.
Brandon and then Melissa.
First of all, thank you, I really appreciate this. Having been there multiple times, I think it's definitely something that needs to be done as soon as possible. So either Superintendent Teak or Molly, can somebody talk about funding that might be able to support this?
Sure. Sure, so we, just from Linda, when we started this conversation with Linda. Funding for playgrounds is a difficult one, it doesn't fit under one bucket, correct? So for us, we started talking about our school choice that we have not used for two years. One of the gifts that we got last year at the end of the year was an extra $120,000 we weren't even banking on. We got more money than what we had running before. So that felt good. Initially, when I spoke with Linda, she wasn't looking for the school department to take care of everything soup to nuts. She just came saying, what can you do to help? I talked to everybody, I tried every avenue. And so I do think before anything is decided, you need to see it. You need to see it and understand and say, you know, what do we want it to? But I would think this is a school choice fund, this is really about, first time, this one's about kids. This is a, this is a great project. And playgrounds at our other schools, Paulbrook will get one with the new building. The city did a beautiful job over at Francis Drake. Even though Mr. Bear would like a few more extra pieces, it's just extra pieces if he would like, we can get there at some point. This one is long overdue. We keep taking a little piece here and a little piece here off of things and just trying to make it safe.
Yeah.
But when you see the usage and the amount of children out there, I think, right now, if you could, if we worked Northwest anything for this project, we would feel good about it. And no one's very comfortable with that.
No, I appreciate that and I just think that kind of what you just hit on, Paulbrook's gonna get a new playground, Francis Drake has got a new playground. I think it's only fair that we do this as soon as possible. So I would be in full support of moving forward with this.
Melissa, isn't it great, was after that?
So, do you have an idea of how many kids genuinely can be on this at one time? Because Francis Drake is beautiful, but it can't support a lot of kids at one time. So if we're going to build it, I want it to be enough that all of the kids can use it at some point during the day if they're able to. Yeah, no. No, I appreciate the feedback. I don't know that there's a capacity. I don't know if that's the right term. But I don't know that there is a term for that, they know what we're servicing. And from what I understand, you know, it's pretty comparable to what we have there. Like Paula said, we have a really big space, we have the big field, we have the blacktop in the playground, you know? So what we're doing is comparable space-wise, we're filling that space. So I don't think it's any less than what we have as far as the number. I mean, I can ask that for our rep, I don't know specifically.
There's a, Melissa, there's like a formula they use? How much time turns over and all that?
Then my next question is, and obviously I want it built as a priority, but then if, I guess my question is, is if Francis Drake was able to deed some of that land over to the city, where this is up against the baseball field and then the, or the rec department?
And so the school department, the school department owns the fields.
So we've gone through all of this, so Wendy, Wendy's.
They tried us, little country of its own.
Wendy's really tried to help.
Northwest.
Be like the Middle East.
We talked to, we also talked, you know, maybe there's phases that we do and we phase it in. It's not for.
Honestly, Melissa, if they could get this for this price.
No, honestly, if we had an increase, I would rather it get done.
And then we can add to it later.
Equity and this playground has been neglected for a very long time, so we have my full.
And you can, and they've got rooms, so maybe we do. Did you, has this been bid by the purchasing or are they on the state business list, do you know? They're on the state?
She talked, she talked with Greg.
I'd move, honestly, just my opinion, if you could really get this done for that much, I'd move real quick. Honestly, I, because everything schools just skyrocket.
It's like 25% in one, six months.
He just had to update the prices because.
Don't tell him it's a good.
The next year's prices?
Yeah, so this is updated because they fluctuate so much. So this is the updated price, but if we were to like order, they said if you could order it and then if we had somewhere to store the material until that builds, then that's something, you know? There's so many different things that they could do, but a year, a lot.
We had him to change the bid to change the dates because the bid was up. And we said, oh, no, no, we need time.
Well, like this current bid now is, they are good for 30 days. And then they, and maybe, maybe it is the same after 30 days, but that's changed.
My only comment was, thank you very much for the work you put into this. I've been to the Northwest playground a number of times and think any amount of work you put into it, it's going to be well worth it and very much needed. My only question is, do we own this tonight or?
I think we should move, honestly, I, I hope it's O'Brien and Brian and the son and everybody else is watching. Honestly, this is, I've seen like three or four in the last two months. I have a hard time to believe that they can actually do this to this, even with 10% above that, which is another $23,000. But if you could lock them in, in my opinion, just what I've seen on playgrounds and skate parks, I mean, that skate park like doubled in cost.
Well, if it conforms with the rules of the school committee, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this proposal and move forward.
Second. Can we use some from Auburn or some from?
Nothing, Esr, Esr, no, Esr.
Esr.
So it would be our school choice, it would be secret.
We haven't touched that in two years.
And you could afford to do that at this particular point? I mean, honestly, anytime you can get kids to run around and play, to be active.
When I'm sitting at that line watching them all. They're all over the place, so I know how much work you guys.
And truly, when we did this work, we said, if we're going to do this, it's going to be sustainable. So the drainage is actually key to this project.
And if it's included in the legal.
Talk, talk to the DPW about the drainage pipe.
Yeah, there were a couple pieces.
You've got the Stormwater Management Act now that requires either detention basins or that the water has to remain on the property.
Yeah.
So that could change things.
Before it was, it would be fine.
They can run a camera down there, probably goes into the brook in the back somewhere and not the street.
So this company, Dean, is your company, the one that does all your projects for the rec department? So they know our grounds really well and yeah, that's a solid plan.
But you want to definitely make sure, you don't want to like get in the middle of a project and then that drain has to be cammed and then blocked, it goes into it.
Yeah, before anything we move forward, we definitely need the DPW.
If you can lock in this price.
Yeah, right.
And then later, Melissa, maybe what we do is we look for other funding and then we move on that. But at this particular point, for the next two or three years, you're just not going to be able to find anything, half the pots are missing, you know? And this company's reputable, they have good sources to get the material from.
Yeah.
Seems like, you know, I wish it was 123 or 100,000, but.
Me too. That's what we thought, sorry.
Well, I did years ago.
And listen, Lindsay, your question, looking at this, well, it looks like more students will be able to use this than most current.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, no, looking at this and looking at this now, that this one's actually better.
It may affect your attendance at Northwest. Kids like me, we came to school for jam, we came to school for. It's why we came to school and munch dessert.
That's right.
Got us to the next grade. All right, so we have a motion of second. All in favor signify and usual manner. Those opposed? Okay, thank you Superintendent Administration.
I didn't think I was gonna get you that. Congratulations. But I will take, I don't think we're not going on.
We did the easy part. Now you go, now you go over to our work. Anybody wants a copy of this? Right here if you want. We got plenty of copies if anybody wants one.
We're breaking into the party, you know? Yeah.
Bring back the merry ground. The spinning thing, right?
Can we bring back those like, those things that fall from the mushroom dams?
Those are dangerous. Next up.
We were gonna bring in that new high school principal. He's probably caught up with parents right now.
That's all right.
So Dr. Ramona, the nice thing is we'll bring him forward to the next meeting. We were in talks trying to, his start date was supposed to be September sixteenth. We're working with superintendent. He will be fully onboard during this Thursday, right? So he has been, you know, doing double duty on top of army duty. He's lieutenant colonel for thirty-plus years, so he's good together. So he's at the high school right now, so I think parents have probably pulled him in. But as of this Thursday, he's on full time and he will be opening day with us. So we're very excited. So we'll bring him back to the next meeting, okay?
Steve, Greg is online and he said he's not able to come, but weigh in on the boys' part. Greg R.
He's locked in a guest room that way.
He said Greg R.
Yeah, but he said guests. Alright, so I've allowed it to mine.
Alright, go ahead and try to fix that and move on. Anything else Superintendent?
I'm good.
Alright, thank you. So everything went well this summer or was? Some programs, enrichment programs, everything went well? Obviously, I mean, did most everybody that signed up show?
It was huge. It was worth it. At the next September meeting, when they asked over to an update on the attendance, the staff, who was doing what, very well attended.
Good. Is anybody else new that you wanted to introduce while we're here?
Oh, no, Dan, just the two principals. And we introduced, you may have missed, we have our student reps here this evening. That will be joining us. We have Gold and we have Matt. And so Brandon will be working to bring them up.
He got excited talking about the playground. See, that's why. We're already blonde.
Oh, did you? Yeah, would you both?
Absolutely.
I continue to say, had I known what these little parks being, these water parks, after twenty-nine years, there would have been one in every single street. Because honestly, that's how well received they are. And parents get up, kids get out, and they interact with the. When the camps are off to the side and you leave the kids alone, that's the best. It's only one of the camps.
Kids trying to go to the splash pad over by pool.
Yes.
It's so annoying.
That's what I'm saying.
I just said, if you could put a splash pad on every street, that would just.
That's what I'm saying. It's unbelievable. Yes, you.
Greg's on, we want to test.
Greg, can you hear us? This is like massive. Greg, are you on the moan one step?
He got the thumbs up, please. I, no, I gave him the option to unmute, so I think he should be.
Greg, I mute.
He can't.
Alright. If you wanna vote yes, do a handstand as much. Alright, well, moving on to approval of the minutes from June twenty-first meeting. The June twenty-first meeting, has anybody got a chance to review them?
Yeah, let's make a motion to approve the minutes from June twenty.
Alright, our motion is second. Any errors or additions? Anything? Alright, Mr. Ron, second here. All in favor signify and usual manner. Okay, thank you, Ron. Thank you, Greg R. And we have United. Alright, now we'll move on to finance, subsidies. Anything on finance? Melanie, anything?
We have warrants approved this evening.
Alright, let's check down the warrants. I'll say it. Anyone for finance? Wanna do the warrants?
You're all financed.
Well, then speak up. This is your chance.
You wanna do it?
Sean.
I'll make a motion to approve the following warrants. Alright, we've got some left over for FY twenty-two. Warrant fifty-one totals eight million one hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Warrant fifty-two totals five hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and one dollars and forty-six cents. Warrant fifty-three totals six hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Warrant fifty-four totals three million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and four cents. And warrant fifty-five totaling one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Still FY twenty-two, one of the ransom revolving. Warrant fifty-one totals one million one hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Warrant fifty-two totals one hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Warrant fifty-three totals one hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Warrant fifty-four totals one hundred and seventy-three thousand, sorry, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and six cents. Warrant fifty-five, there isn't one. And then warrant from this current fiscal year FY twenty-three. Warrant two totals two hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. Warrant three totals seventy-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Warrant four totals four hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-four cents. And warrant five totals eighty-one thousand four hundred and one dollars and fifty-one cents. Five more, I'm almost there. Ransom revolving. Warrant two totaling one hundred and forty-five thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and ninety cents. Warrant three totaling eighty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Warrant four totaling five hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents. And warrant five totaling one thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents. Motion to approve.
A lot of money you spent on a short amount of time. Couldn't make it last longer.
It's two years, yeah.
Couldn't make it last at least ten minutes. Alright, you have a motion second. Are there any questions? Ali made the second. Any questions about any of them? Student reps, any questions? No?
It was amazing how much money.
I didn't realize that much money that quickly.
Makes buying that gym really, nothing. Alright, all in favor signify and usual manner. Greg? We recorded as a yes. Anything else, Melanie?
Yes, sir. We have, every year, beginning of the school year, we need to go to have the budget put into unus based on the city council's budget that was voted for yourself, the city. So if you look, there's two different reports. You've got a salary budget report where money has been added in. We were, we asked for fifty-six million three hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. We were allotted fifty-seven million five hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars under our salary line. So we had to move that money around and put it in where we thought fiscally would be. Then on the expense side, which is the next budget, you're gonna see that some of that funding was removed out. We were, had voted, the school committee had initially voted to ask for thirty million one hundred and seventy-five dollars, four hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-five cents. We were allotted twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine million twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Basically, the money washed from expenses to salaries. So we took some various lines, and again, these are suggestions. If the committee has any other suggestions that can sort of change this.
So did things change when the state finally approved this budget?
No.
No.
Nothing at all? But we did well with the student opportunity.
Yeah, we did really well.
So we're going from fifty-six total, wages and salaries gone from fifty-six, three sixty-one, seven oh two fifty-three. And the adjustments is about one point one million, right, roughly. So brings it to a total of about fifty-seven five.
Yeah. Rest.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Any questions? Alright.
I'm making a motion to.
Motion by Ali.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
You seconded by Ron. Don't know the questions and comments. We're adjusting the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty-three. All in favor? Those opposed? Greg? Will be aye aye. Okay. Don't hear a stand. Alright, we're gonna jump back to policy.
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
On the back of this other page, there was requesting one thousand.
Kendall Fund.
We are next agenda item. The next agenda item, there is a psych school requesting to spend out of the Kendall Fund. It is eighteen hundred dollars, one thousand eighty-seven dollars. They're looking to purchase some students and staff parking signs for the parking lot.
Student parking.
Right, so that makes sense. It's in passes, parking passes, which I didn't understand why in the world.
It's not, we always charge students to park. So we're choosing not to do that. We'd like to get out of Canada's again, and we had not touched it here, so.
In your fantasy.
Sign for passes. I think, yeah, I believe it's a platform for the car.
Yeah, she's right, yeah.
I think they usually park.
Students still afford to have a car and insurance?
Yeah. I heard they were charging, you know, there were not your issues is that there was like an overage. There wasn't enough or parking for the students.
So we haven't had that problem in a few years. We worked on, this is identified staff, this is identified student, so that teachers aren't trying to cut kids off and get no practice spot. And it seems to be working, so we just wanna keep it clean and concise while we can.
Is it based on attendance? You have good attendance?
Teachers get a spot.
Is there an expiration in the passing sign?
Every year, every year.
But like during a day?
Park anywhere you want.
I know, it may sound true, but you know.
Just stay in the student zone, stay in the teacher's zone.
But say, what about drive your bike?
Ooh, you gotta bring up the bike all the time.
What I really wanted to bring up, you've been reading that same book the last three months. That's what I wanted to. Alright, anything on the policy here today?
No, we obviously did not wait to be too.
We didn't take a vote. So motion approved. Second.
No, it was a vote for this meeting.
All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you.
Who seconded?
I did.
Well, you know.
I was thinking here.
Policy. Run a bicycle? Okay.
I'm going with the bicycle.
Place the park the bicycle.
That's it.
Come on. Wear it on this.
I didn't know that.
He's referring to the bus.
There is one outside.
Bicycle, but there's not a no, I think.
There's not enough.
Alright, next agenda, Ron. That's a valid question. You missed it. You brought it up. I didn't break up, but I'm gonna go with it. I'm with you. And I wanna bike, bike things, even on my Gallagher. I don't wanna hurt up against the wall. I'm tired. Whatever, whoever wants to take the blame. You brought it up, guilty as charged. Okay, okay, voted on the twenty-three budget. We did approve of the warrants we did. We did approve the Kendall Fund expense. Now we're gonna do the rural business, the enrollment report.
Well, all your enrollment is in, we're looking really good. You'll see some of our classes are quite large. So good news, you don't wanna be here. So we're keeping an eye on those classes and making sure that we don't go over too far over our recommendations.
Maybe it's a good opportunity to update everybody on the Paulbrook School. Their state met with us on the enrollment piece. And I was, I felt pretty good that they have some really talented people who understand the formular. Before we used to hire companies to come in and do this for us. And they were pretty sharp. I was confident. And so one of the things the superintendent and I, we were advocating for is more space. A couple of reports just issued, talking about the high cost of daycare. I mean, honestly, for a lot of people, people wanna know where anybody is and why they get those jobs. It's probably because it's cheaper to stay home than it is to pay for childcare, or pretty equal. And I remember when we did pre-K, a lot of people got upset. People that were private businesses got upset because they thought we're gonna take their business away. And there's plenty of business. We talked about the possibility of adding more space, that you can either go pre-K, K, or K. And they seemed receptive of it. I guess just look at some more work to do on it, but.
We're ahead of schedule.
Yeah, and we can make it part of our, we haven't closed out yet or anything, once we stop talking about building and all that. They're figuring seven hundred student school?
Yes.
Is that what they're doing?
Yes, and they made an extra sort of like a K one for any sort of bubble effects, which will help take it over for the students. So that's gonna alleviate quite a bit from the other buildings.
This is fault.
These K numbers are based on, they're all in August eighteenth, and the number jumps up over the last few.
They're going crazy right now.
But, you know, the superintendent said, you know, we have, like, you gotta kind of follow this too because, you know, the stats are of first grade, but you don't follow that bubble through. Their feeling, based on history, is that when you have a system our size and you have five of a classroom, it's easier to kind of adapt or kind of.
Absorb those.
Absorb that than it is a school system that's building a school with two kindergarten or two first rates. So they were pretty shocked. I have to give them some credit because they learned.
The answer formula is that I was like, oh, please stop explaining because I don't.
It's all, it's what we used to have to pay people a lot of money to do it. And so they get it and, so that's on board.
But we are, it looks like we're gonna get that.
There's no other thing on board.
Oh, yeah, the only thing that did come up is being hybrid in Lomond's stuff. It was usually three fifty, three eighty, now it's eight hundred and forty.
Well, that's because all we did is take everybody that was born at Lomond's Hospital. Now we gotta break that apart. I haven't seen that before.
Are we all that surprised though? Are you gonna, you gotta a puppy or a baby?
That's another school. It's another school.
Because that measured the question. Because earlier you were saying, you know, that was down, increase enrollments?
Yes.
Now, when you say increase enrollment, over here was saying pre-K, over here. Preschool twenty-five. Is that above that now?
Yes, so that was.
What's the number now?
I don't know it today. That was based off of last Thursday.
Last Thursday?
So the line is out the door. If you notice right now, our K's a little bit, it's quite a bit low.
But it'll catch up.
That one in the next two weeks, it's, the line is out the door right now.
Alright.
Kind of get all the street needs done and get.
Okay, well, that, 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 I just bitted on the time. That beggars the question. What's the, what's the, do you have a limit? Is there a limit that we can have or is there no limit?
We have to, we can't turn anybody away who lives in our.
I realize that. I realize them being simple.
Size.
We have to be simple.
Size and also, you're right, we're not supposed to, we note the word, we are not supposed to refuse. But is there a limit?
No, no.
Okay, and so, so, I'm just begging, if there's no limit, where are we gonna put them? Because who was saying something about, there's gonna be an extra school or an extra class? No, I just said, that's the total, the birth, birth total, and then I'll take the Lomond's as another school. But we don't think that's the case. We think that everybody. Yeah, this is the regional hospital, you know? But one of the things, Ron, that they were clear about is that once they look at the formula and we can still advocate for the extra room, I think we could really advocate for the pre-K because that's a real need, especially in the workforce.
That's where it is.
But what they emphasized is, a couple of times, is that, you know, once they reach that point where they, you know, develop this model, that anything you do beyond that is at our cost. There's no, at our cost. So there's no sharing of seventy-two or seventy-five percent and we pay the double, you know, twenty-five percent. So they're, they won't let these projects, not us, but these projects used to blow up like this and then the state was required and that allowed them to do fewer schools and fewer projects. So now they're saying, as we talked about, you know, we talked about cafeteria space, court space.
Well, that's right. About the Esr funding, is the Esr?
You're shaking your head, Chris. I asked a bad question again.
Well, no, we didn't talk about the Esr funding.
Because this was a school building.
Yeah.
I, I know that, but school building, school building, school building, I keep repeating myself, it goes on my ear. School building has kids in it. You can't have one without the other.
No, they're gonna make sure of it.
And so that's why I was asking, you know, about the size, because we're always ordering the formula. The size of twenty-five or less, or twenty-five or more.
The formula will determine the size of the school. The formula will, will determine the size of the school. But what's interesting is, before, they had this, then, that, that, same as saying we were gonna expand it, they had this really rigid formula, you had to have so many square feet for media space, gymnasium space, cafeteria space. Now they're saying, well, we feel cafeteria space, you get two or three turnovers for cafeteria. Now all of a sudden, they're back to waiting, because they can't do as many projects when they have to spend all this extra money. And, and it's a reimbursement, right, we get it, so, I give them a lot of credit, they've changed a lot, and I think it's good for the taxpayers, good for us. And we can still advocate for some changes before this thing gets to the final, which I, I think is, the pre-K still is, is if we can't help the daycare, some people along the line. But you're right about the cost of daycare. And you're right, there are people who have made those decisions not to go to work, because it, it costs a lot of money. Oh, people do it. And it's, it's. Maybe tell me today's quarter for mortgage payment. Oh yeah, oh yeah, it's, it's. And you know, the, the worst part about it is, is that for daycare, and I am a movie star. With daycare, you need to have good competent caregiver and components. And the worst thing about it is, that there's a lot of them, they're being paid subnormal pay, subnormal wages. What's driving it is that they, for the longest time, they weren't being paid the monies that were due. They were being paid almost, I hate to use this word, I'm gonna be spanked for this, they were being paid housewarming money. They were just doing it, for the greater. They were under, they were under. They weren't paying.
Josh, David. I just had a question on enrollment, um, is there a waiting track? Or duty track, how many of these families that are coming to practice here, that were taking their kids out during the pandemic?
All of that, is that, that's important, so are you thinking like the homeschool?
Yeah, homeschools and private school rates.
More, yes, and high name.
Just kinda wondering how, how much of that, I mean, I don't need to know right now, just, um.
I don't have it in my head knowledge, but I'll make a note. Last year, it got a little bit better, so I think we had a hundred families during the COVID year, and maybe last year, seventy-five, eighty. So it improved slightly, I believe last year. Moree gets those directly, um, it doesn't feel like, I don't wanna say, but, um, we're hoping it comes in a little bit more.
So would you be able to tell us which schools, like for example, Princess Drake and Fallbrook, and which ones ending? Less contracting? By grade or by whichever way you wanna slice the apple?
It's easy, yeah.
Okay, thank you, all good, all good comments, just wanted to update everybody before we get too far, but the process is moving along. They have not declared whether or not it's a building, renovation, expansion, or just a renovation.
So right now, besides the general enrollment, you also have yellow enrollment, especially patient broken down by um, the genre, so, so we are keeping track of every movement part right now, so it's, right now it's a nice goal.
We could do these other building updates and grounds and all that stuff, and we talked about them at the end of the year.
Yeah, Bush put in, um, he thought it was important, he gave me a, a report after the summer, the work that had been done in each one of the buildings, and moved it down. Each one of our buildings received new, uh, landscape and equipment.
Yeah, I saw.
So now we need to get outside, because the inside's looking pretty good. Um, the inside, it was the priority, and the grass doesn't look really great right now, but maybe after tonight, it'll.
We had the DPW, like, three streets small, I called them this summer, they took trees down, whatever they could do, they started what they did.
Whatever we do, clean them up, but right now, the high school is really nice, for the students of the house. Uh, micro students, we're just at a, about a whole compliment with our custodians to the first time in three years, that feels great.
That's a lot of work, I saw that, and that was, that's a lot to give that, it's very impressive.
It is, so they've got a really nice, and they committed to it, but now, both our facilities director needs to keep up on.
You gotta buy equipment, people can't, you can't expect a customer, you get out there with a push lawnmower. And the whole place, you need the right equipment to do it, you gotta service it. Alright, so now we're gonna move on, anything on the new rural business, we're going to an executive session, but we coming back?
Yes, finally?
Yes.
So we are coming back?
Yes, yes.
Alright, so is there anything on the new rural business, just while we're here, big gun?
Those who's in our schools, I think they're really happy since we're out there, it's working, it's good.
You wanna announce one more time, first day of school?
First day of school is August thirtieth for grades K one to, one through twelve, and September sixth for kindergarten. Um, so all teachers will be back next Monday, who's joined us eight-thirty, Commissioner Riley is welcoming, welcoming our staff back, so.
And that's at the high school?
That's at the high school now, the twenty. Alright, I think I've noticed we go into an executive session under chapter thirty-nine to discuss contract negotiations, and we will be in charge.
Alright, this is a voice vote, starting with Mr. Greg R. Executive session, yea and aye, is it yea?
Yea.
Yeah, Ron?
Yea.
I'll give a vote, is it yea, Greg?
Yea.
Melissa?
Yea.
Yea.
Anyone else out there? Okay. We are in executive session.